So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 15th Committee of the Whole. For those joining us on the live stream or watching the video later. In the council chamber with me are Mayor McNeil Smith and Councillor Garnett. Joining us via Zoom are my colleagues, Councillor O'Keefe, Councillor Duncan, Councillor Fallon, and Councillor Rintoul. And I'd like to start off, I guess, by calling the meeting to order. And I'd like to acknowledge that we're meeting tonight in the territory of the Wasanich Nation. And we thank them for their willingness to share their land with the people that now live and work there. So, committee, you have the agenda in front of you. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you, Chair. Seeing as we have two presentations this evening under development permit applications and that before that we have grants and aid and council procedure, that certainly grants and aid will take some deliberation. I would move an amended agenda such that the two administration and finance reports come after development and planning this evening.
Okay, so that's moving the agenda as amended. Is there a second here?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. I'll note that we've got Mr. Periboom in the waiting room. If somebody could let him in. Sorry? Yes. It was just, I was noting that. So, next on the agenda, we have our minutes from the Committee of the Whole Meeting of February 16.
Move adoption?
Okay, that's moved. Do I have a second here?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councillor O'Keefe. Any discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Okay, so moving on then with the amended agenda, we'll move on to item 9A. This is development permit application number DP 100819. This is 10478 and 10482 Resthaven Drive to construct a two-story, sorry, two and a half-story multifamily townhome development. And we've got a presentation by Mr. Will Periboom from Victoria Design Group. So, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Will Periboom with Victoria Design Group. I'm the designer of this project on behalf of Dallas Rudd. The project is an add-on to an existing townhouse rezoning we've done just recently and is under construction and as your drawings would be indicated as Block A and Block B. Subsequent to that rezoning, the property next door became available to Mr. Rudd and he purchased it and is proposing additional eight units in Blocks C and D as you see on your site plan. The character of the units are very typical to what we did before. They're basically two-bedroom units up with living, dining, kitchen on the main floor and a third bedroom on the lower floor. They have fairly wide garages, approximately just over 15 feet. This allows for, you know, parking a vehicle and other accessories like bikes and recycling and garbage to be contained within the units themselves. Other than that, we meet all the zoning criteria. We have a lot coverage of 47%, where the allowable is 55%. We are under height or basically just at height. We meet all the required setbacks for the units and we have a parking ratio of 1.14. So, that exceeds the minimum parking itself. Other than that, I'm available for any questions from the committee with regard to this project. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions for the presenter? Councillor Fallon?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Mr. Periboom. Nice to see you again. I have a question regarding the adaptable units. I don't know where your knowledge is on this, but if a person were to have a converted van for mobility issues and given the space that's going to be taken up in the garage with the elevator, if they chose to build one in, I have to specify, would there be adequate room for them to get themselves out of the side of the van and into a wheelchair, for instance, and to maneuver over to the elevator?
Yeah, I appreciate your question. I actually had a grandson who is also disabled and requires a wheelchair. So, I'm quite familiar with this. The elevator is kept in the outside corner so that when the van will pull in, it'll basically sit in the elevator at its rear corner panel so it would allow for the door to open up completely on the side and discharge it. Again, a lot of the vans that are done now are rear discharge-type vans. That's the most economical one you can get because it doesn't have to be a hydraulic unit. And that's, again, why we have oversized garage doors rather than just a nine-foot garage doors. You can pull in the van, keep it to one side, and you'd have still plenty of room to get past the van if it's a rear discharge-type van.
Okay, so just to clarify, this would be someone who is independent but using mobility aid? Not someone, the question I'm posing right now would be for someone who is independent and using?
Yeah, yeah, the same thing would occur. So, it was a side discharge van. They would discharge on the right-hand side. The elevator would be basically in line with the back wheel. So, the side doors would be past that elevator where it's located.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councillor Garnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Periboom. When I took a visit there on the weekend, so the entry point and exit point for the entire 15-unit complex would be to the left-hand side of 10478, correct?
Correct.
Now, is there enough, looking at it, it was hard to tell. Is there going to be enough space for two vehicles? I'm just thinking in terms of a vehicle coming in and one coming out at the same time.
Yes, the courage right away there is accessible for a fire truck. So, it is a six-meter-wide easement or access down that side with an 18 or 5.5-meter-wide actual paved surface. So, that gives, you know, in English would say you would have nine feet per car to maneuver past it, which is more than enough. The average, like a pickup, full-size pickup truck would be six feet wide.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Periboom. Not a question, just a comment. Just like to comment how much I appreciate the efforts making with the adaptable units. And also, it's a type of housing that we need more of, so appreciate those efforts there. Also, the attention you're taking with providing larger garages. So, we end up seeing a lot of residents coming to us asking to build sheds or other things because they've got a tiny garage and they don't have enough room for their stuff. So, I think that's great in your design that you're anticipating that and providing enough space for people. So, thank you for designing that.
And that's a good way to phrase it, providing place for their stuff. People can have pretty much stuff.
Well, yeah, and also what happens is if they don't have a big enough garage, they often use it for their stuff and then they take it to the street park.
Exactly, exactly.
Which is a complaint as well, so.
That's why I'm actually a real advocate for carports.
Yeah.
Because people can't fill it up with their stuff, so they will use it for their vehicle.
Good point. So, thank you for that. That's all for me.
Okay, further, Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Periboom. A couple of questions, and I'm actually turning to the last page of the design, which is page A15, which I believe is the landscaping. And my first question is with regards to the pathway on the west side. So, that's intended to be a pedestrian path from the sidewalk into the driveway area that separates the units. But I see that it extends down into Block C along that western perimeter. I'm just wondering what the, and there's a cedar gate there. I'm just wondering what the purpose of that stretch is of that path?
Well, that path is an access to the Unit 15 in Block C is actually a side access. And the reason we did that is the staircases, when we maneuver them, bring it in, where we had a problem in Block B where we had our staircase to maneuver that vehicle out, we had a problem with that staircase and it took some engineering solutions. And we were able to move the retaining wall back to solve it. In this case, we wanted to keep the retaining wall of the parking in line with the parking. And so, we removed the staircase so Unit 7 would have access, better backup aisle, and then brought that in as a side entrance on Unit 15 since we had that large side yard on that side.
Okay, thank you. And so, to the previous comments with regards to the driveway and the safety associated with that, the uses there, it would certainly be safer for the residents using the pedestrian walkway if they were on foot coming that way. And I see that there are stairs from the pathway down to the driveway. Has consideration been given to possibly something that, you know, a stroller or something would be able to not have to use stairs but be able to use a ramp? I don't know what the height of those stairs would be or?
Yeah, yeah, no, to put a ramp in there would take up, surprising, we'd probably need about, technically, yeah, we'd need about almost the same length as that driveway. So, probably a good 30, 40 feet of ramp to meet any type of ramping requirement. You know, when we have a block of these, this, or, you know, a townhouse unit of this amount, to walk down the driveway, it's not like there's going to be vehicles moving up and down there. Probably be the vehicle count on that would probably be around one an hour if not even that. Again, Blocks A and D do have direct access from the sidewalk. So, it's really, you know, 15, so it's really access to the seven units, 8 through 14, that would either have to come down the driveway or across the parking lot. But either way, they would be crossing that parking area.
Okay, thank you. A couple of other questions, and that is, again, looking at the landscaping. Is all of the landscaping, the borders on each of the units and so on, is that considered common space of the strata?
Which areas are you referring to?
Well, all of the yards, all of the yard space and the shrubbery and so on that's on either side of the outdoor spaces, both in front of Block D and?
Yeah, so the, yeah, that. Yeah, I attach to you, the landscaping will be considered common area and maintained by the strata. Although the patios would be considered limited common space and limited to the sole use of the, to the unit that the patios are attached to.
So, residents wouldn't be doing planting themselves?
Not in this design, no. It would, we would want it to be cohesive and taken care of through some sort of a landscaper and that's usually the way we handle strata units. If they wanted, someone wanted to have a little bit of their own, you know, herb garden or something like that, they could always create a flower box and put it on their patio and do something like that. But the actual landscape area would be considered common space.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. And the three areas that are stoned between Block A and Block D, between Blocks C and B, and then east of Block B, are those accessible or are they enclosed?
They are open, but basically because there wouldn't be a lot of light coming in there to grow something would be not very achievable. So, we're using kind of like a gravel or a small river rock-type unit with some landscape cloth underneath to stop the weeds from growing. But that still gives you access to the hydro meters and access to maintenance on the sides of the buildings, but not trying to grow something in that. It is fairly dark between those two buildings, I would think, yeah.
Yeah, no, I was thinking more on the, in terms of rain and water management for those spaces. That's all managed?
Yes, yes, yeah, and it's all permeable, the, yeah.
Okay.
And the pavers itself too in the driveway are permeable, hangers.
My last question is with regards to garbage recycling and kitchen waste, so three separate bins that residents have. And it does indicate on the drawing that recycling garbage will be, for each unit, will be in the garage. But in terms of collection, where will 15 residents put all of the recycling bins and garbage bins and kitchen waste bins for collection?
Well, the way it is designed, of course, it would be done through a private collector and with one of their smaller unit trucks that usually collects it. So, you would open just beside your garage door. You could just put it outside your garage door and it just sits there. And on the day of pickup, just like you do with your recycling items, you put them in, you end it the driveway with your case, you end it, your driveway is your garage door. So, you just put them outside there and then the private contractor will pick up the recycling or garbage. And usually, the recycling and garbage are done on different days, so. It's, I don't see that as an issue. And there's a bit of a wall space there, I believe it's my plans, but it's about three feet long on the backside of the garage is where we can put the recycling boxes on each corner, each garage door, beside each garage door.
Okay, thank you for those answers.
Councillor Fallon? Sorry, Councillor Fallon?
Thank you, Mr. Periboom. Just a follow-up, and the mayor brought this to light. On the patio space, how is someone who is using a mobility aid, how are they accessing? Because it appears to be that there are stairs coming from the house onto the patio space. So, how would someone in a mobility aid be accessing that space?
If they were in a complete wheelchair thing, it would be difficult. They would have to climb up those stairs or have some sort of a stair lift on those stairs. But the, yeah, the elevator itself, yeah, yeah, and it's the front unit. So, I guess they, if they had to, I mean, it sounds ridiculous, but they could essentially come down into the driveway, come around the building and onto their patios from the sidewalk or have some sort of a lift system on the front stairs.
Okay, so there isn't direct access unless you're able to use the stairs for someone with mobility issues to access their patio space?
Yeah, it's not considered a fully, in that sense, a fully accessible. Anything on the interior of the building is accessible, but the, if you wanted to use the patio, you would have to go outside and around and then back in on the front side. So, it wouldn't be, like you said, some of what that was, yeah, it would be more some of that was, still had some sort of independence in their ability to.
I don't want to quibble over little things because I see so many benefits of what you have already put into this. But obviously, if we're going to, and I mean this generally, not you and whatnot, if we're going to look at accessibility, then certainly, I think, for the individual who uses mobility aids, to be able to access something on their own, under their own power, whether they're in a chair or whatever else device, there's a sense of independence to be able to use all parts of your property without someone assisting you.
Yeah, I agree with you on that, but in this case, we can't.
I realize it's not about perfection, but I just want to give that thought some airspace as we, as a society move forward and looking at accessibility there. We can't just say, well, you've got room to spin your wheelchair around in the bathroom and in the kitchen, so whoop-de-doo, you know, you've got an accessible unit. You do need to be able to feel comfortable that you are able to access your own home through the front door, through the one that everybody else is accessing it, and that you can access your patio. So, that was just my soapbox for a moment. Thank you very much.
And it's close to my heart too, so, thank you.
Okay, I've got Councillor Garnett and then Mayor McNeil Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One follow-up question, if I may. Have you guys gotten around to, I'm assuming we're looking at a demographic of families based on three-bedroom townhomes, some kind of a price point in mind?
That would be, have to be addressed by Dallas Rudd. I don't take in that part, but I would assume it'd be market-type townhomes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just one follow-up. I was going into the drawings and looking at the patio spaces.
Can't hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just one follow-up. And it's just looking at the drawing and the patio spaces to the, to the south of Block C. And I, this does come, this comes from a site visit, and I appreciate that I was looking at Block B, which is an approved development, but I gather it will look the same for those patio spaces. And that is that the patio space is, seems to be significantly below the grade of the adjacent park. And I'm wondering if you can, if you know the height from that to the grade of the park? And I gather there will be a retaining wall on that, on that south border. And I gather it will come above grade to the, to the grade of the park?
Well, I haven't been to the site recently. My original concept is that the patio will be at the park level. So, it's probably, they just excavated and they haven't backed to that yet. But I would think the patio should be pretty close to the park level because we keep the grade around the building itself. The finished grade on both the pass, on both the north and south side and on the Resthaven side, all the patios are at basically four feet above the basement level. So, I don't know what you saw, but if you looked at the basement floor level, the patio would be up four feet.
Okay, thank you again.
Okay, are there any further questions from committee? And if not, there's a staff recommendation.
I move the recommendation that development permit application number DP 100819 at 10478 and 10482 Resthaven Drive be forwarded to the Advisory Planning Commission for further review and comment.
Seconded.
Okay, that's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Councillor Garnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just some thoughts that hopefully will be passed along to the APC after doing a site visit like the mayor did. I do have a few concerns around parking, understanding, of course, that the parking requirement is met as is required. But given the fact that there's three-bedroom units, probably going to be families, one car per family is not likely going to be the total in there. So, we're going to have excess cars, and there is, of course, no visitor parking. So, I'm just, that particular area can be bottlenecked with on-street parking. So, that is a concern that I saw just looking at the actual design of it. And it is a lot, I mean, for the neighbors that are there, it's 15 units on what is equivalent of two lots, large lots, granted. That's a lot of homes going into a fairly small area. So, I can understand how, you know, some of the neighbors might be a little overwhelmed by it given the development. But it is something, row housing, a different kind of housing. And hopefully, Mr. Rudd, I would love it if Mr. Rudd could come back with and provide information with the price point. And it's in an area where, you know, it's something that families can afford and it's something that we need in our community. So, you know, these are just comments I'm hoping that the APC will take in their discussion. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mayor McNeil Smith?
Yeah, appreciating the answer from Mr. Periboom. I'd like just turn to staff. And again, I do appreciate that the collection of recycling is separate from collection of, on a separate day, separate from garbage and kitchen scraps. But is it typical in a development of this sort that the, I mean, large vehicles pick up at residential driveways that they will actually go into a drive aisle like this and pick up for 15 units?
Go ahead.
Through the chair to Mayor McNeil Smith. I'm not aware of the specifics of private collection companies. New developments of this scale often have a separate garbage and recycling compound. It's not a requirement in the town's bylaws. We do have design guidelines for them when they are proposed. Thank you.
Okay, I passed, on the way home for lunch today on Malview, I passed an eight, one of the residential homes that was turned into, or two that were turned into, an eight-plex. And 13 recycling bins were, there was no common space for those recycling bins. And so, they were sitting on the lawn of one of the residents. We're talking, I mean, there's often two or more recycling bins per resident. And I'm just, I can't see them appearing on the driveway. There's a sidewalk in front. There doesn't seem to be common area for this.
If I could follow up to Mayor McNeil Smith. Staff do have concerns with the pickup as well and that there is adequate space for collection, items on collection day. There's not a lot of space proposed at the front edge of the property with the landscape plan that's proposed. And we would be concerned to see those items piling up on the sidewalk out front. If you imagine how many items there would be per household, that is something that we are working with the developer on improving.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I assume the staff have taken note of all the comments from committee and that those will get passed on to APC. Anything further? If not, call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to 9B, which is development variance permit application number DV 100299. This is 10364 Albay Road to relax the minimum front yard setback in order to construct a deck. And we have a presentation by the property owner and applicant, Mr. David Watkins. Actually, it looks like Lori Watkins. Sir, you have the floor?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
First of all, I want to thank the committee very much for reviewing this application this evening. And I'd also like to thank in particular Kevin Weber of the Planning Department, who has offered me a lot of guidance and advice on bylaws and engineering concerns regarding building this deck and also on the variance procedure. And this is David Watkins. I guess I'm on my wife's computer this evening, who is Lori. So, yes, what we want to do here is put an eight-foot by 26.5-foot deck, which will extend an existing deck on the end of our house here. And it's in our functional backyard, front yard, I guess. The problem here is we're on a triangular lot that is between Albay Road and Resthaven. The Resthaven property line is shorter than the Albay property line. And as such, is our, even though it's our functional backyard, it is technically our front yard. So, that's the origin of the requirement for the variance. The lot dimensions and stuff for the site plan are shown on Attachment 1 of the application. The existing lot coverage is 27.05% coverage. And with this ground-level deck, it will be 28.83%, which I believe falls within the guidelines. The maximum height of the proposed deck above ground is about 0.5 meters. And as it, as the ground rises to the north along the west side of the building, it will become lower than that. We're proposing a decorative pergola structure, which is shown on Attachment 3 where our elevation view there. And it will be a maximum of 2.44 meters. be a maximum of two-point-four-four meters above the deck floor level, which I understand is also within standard, uh, construction guidelines for, for pergolas. The proposed deck will attach to and be continuous with the existing deck that's shown on that, uh, floor plan. And, uh, we're gonna, we're proposing also putting three hundred-and-ten, hundred-and-ten-volt ground fault interrupter outlets along the perimeter of the deck for general usage. Uh, the proposed deck structure is, uh, we're stipulating and guaranteeing that it's going to be within accordance with all existing BC building codes, including but not limited to footings, uh, moisture shielding, uh, stairways, and electrical. Uh, the deck and stair fascia surfaces, any exposed areas, are going to be, uh, composite deck material, and, uh, they're going to coordinate with existing color schemes of the, of the house. The decorative pergola structure is actually going, is proposed at this time to be a T6 aluminum I-beam, and, uh, will be, uh, painted to match the, uh, the, uh, deck surfacing. There's going to be no changes to any of the grade lines, uh, drainage patterns, or any of the elevations on the yard itself. And, uh, uh, we don't, we're going to, uh, cover the, uh, existing lawn that will be underneath this deck with landscaping cloth and decorative crushed rock, so it sh, and then shield it from, uh, with screening from rodents, raccoons, and that sort of thing. So should be a, a good design in that regard. Uh, current underwater sprinkler system in the yard of this house is going to be retained. There's no, uh, additional fencing, sidewalks, or street, or yard lighting that's proposed on it. Uh, the structure, the proposed structure and existing structure for that matter are entirely screened from, uh, street view, both on Albe Road and Resthaven by an existing two-point-six-meter hedge that runs the full length of the, uh, property line down Resthaven around the junction of Albe and Resthaven, and then down the Resthaven, or Albe side, excuse me, until we get to our driveway on Albe. Um, I have a letter of support from, uh, my neighbor, Mr. Peter Cooper, who lives on the other side of this duplex structure where we are, at 10366. Albe is his address. I'm at 10364. He's reviewed the plans and, uh, does not object in any way to the proposal. And, uh, I guess that's, uh, that's most of it. If you have any questions, it's, uh, probably going to be a little simpler proposal than the one that you've just reviewed.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Are there any questions from committee? Councillor Garnet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Watkins. I just have one question. Uh, I did a, a drive-by on the weekend, and I, I did know that you have, um, one deck that's above on the front on Albe, and then you have another deck on the side that's towards Albe and Resthaven. And I'm, I'm assuming you're, the deck you're speaking to, that you're adding to, is the space that's underneath that deck on the side? Or the, the?
Yes, if you look at the small deck on the south end of the house-
Yep.
-that is, it's on the second level, there's an identically sized deck-
Yep.
-on the bottom side there that's the existing deck right now. I think if you can look at the, uh, attachment number two, which is a floor plan of the proposal here, you can see where the existing deck is there. It's framed by two, uh, stone-covered pillars and has stairways going down on the south side there. This, uh, it's, it's just a little small, you know, we found that with COVID protocol and stuff over the last summer, we're using our yard a lot more than we have in the past, and we've, uh, seen the value in outdoor, uh, dining and this sort of thing and visiting, uh, going forward. And that's the origin of the idea for this larger deck at, uh, at lawn level, at yard level.
Yeah, that sort of feeds into my question, because I guess I was, given that you have three, already three existing outdoor spaces, I was wondering what your rationale was for wanting a fourth one and, uh-
Yes, the, the largest one that goes along Albe is unfortunately accessible only through the master bedroom of this house. I, I wish that it could have been accessible out of the dining room or the living space because it represents a very good space for outdoor, uh, relaxation and entertainment. But the accessibility is a little bit of a problem, and being on the east side of the house, it, uh, shades up right around, uh, well, about eleven o'clock in the morning, actually, and, uh, and is subject to the prevailing eastern, east wind off of Roberts Bay, which can be quite, quite chilly to be outside there. And we were just, the idea here is to make use of the west side of the house in the afternoons.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further questions from committee? And if not, would somebody like to make a motion? Uh, Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, and the question, I, the question I have just before making the motion is-
Can't hear you.
The question I have, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, the question I have is through to staff just before I'm making the motion, and that is, um, as we've heard from Mr. Watkins and in the report, that this is a situation where we have a triangle property, and we're talking about, that we're dealing with the length of the two long sides of the triangle. And as it turns out, because one side i, is, um, is longer, uh, the, the, what is in essence the front of the house, where the driveway is and where the front door is, is classified as the backyard, and, uh, the other side, the, the, is, uh, is, um, actually the backyard, but is classified for zoning purposes as the front yard. Would it be the case that, uh, if, if the, the two sides of this triangle were, uh, reversed in terms of length, uh, and, and the Albe side of, uh, was the front yard, that this would not be coming to, uh, to council? There's, uh, there's no concern over the deck itself?
Um, could staff respond to that?
Yes, through the chair to Mayor McNeil Smith. Um, they, at the time the duplex was built, that was the case. No variances were sought to, for the construction of the duplex. Since then, the zoning bylaw has changed, required that the rear yard setback for a duplex or two-family dwelling equals one-third of the depth of the lot, thirty-three percent. So they would still need a variance in this case, just because the, the shape of the lot is unique. But if it was a single-family house, it, the five-and-a-half meters that that's proposed would comply with the zoning bylaw.
Uh, thank you. And, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the recommendation that owners and tenants in occupation of property within seventy-five meters, which is two-hundred-and-forty-six feet, of 10364 Albe Road be notified regarding development variance application number DV 100299 to vary the minimum front yard setback, and that any written correspondence received be forwarded to council at the time of consideration of approval of the variance.
Second.
Second.
Okay, that's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you, and we'll move on then to item number nine, uh, C. And, uh, this is a public art proposal for a wall mural at 2437 Beacon Avenue. And, uh, we have a presentation by, uh, Morgan Shaw. Uh, go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. Um, yes, my name is Morgan Shaw. I'm with the Sydney BIA, and tonight we are proposing the installation of a temporary wall mural, um, and that will be on, at 2347 Beacon Avenue on the side of the building of Cotton and Blues. We have had a discussion with the property owner, um, and this project would be in partnership with Artsy Community Arts Council. Um, the project would be installed professionally, of course, by Beacon Signs. Um, the idea with the project itself is that it is removable, and it is hopefully, um, something that can be temporary or moved to a different location or changed, um, at, as necessary. Um, the dimensions of the project are sixteen feet wide by e, eight feet tall, so I believe on the second page of our proposal, it would show how much of the wall it fits. Unfortunately, we are a little bit, um, the type of material that we are able to use to do an installation of this size is limited, so we had to do it, it won't encompass the entire wall, but a portion of it. Um, we have been working with a graphic designer to put the design in place, similar to that that is attached in our proposal. And at the end, um, after I, I go through the details, I'll share with you where we're at in terms of the design for, um, this space here. Um, the project is, aligns with the first annual Sydney Art Walk, which will be coming up beginning this Thursday, so we've got a few installations happening throughout Sydney, um, one of which is on private land, so this one we, we needed to come to council for. But I think that in terms of spring and installation time, it's a nice, it would be nice to have something bright and colorful, especially on that corner, um, and aligning with the messaging that hopefully we're getting back to somewhat normal at these days. But, um, yeah, just uh, something for, for people to enjoy that is, um, got COVID precautions or measures in place. And, um, yeah, so I will share my screen here, and then if there's any questions, happy to answer those. I will hopefully share my screen. Oh, here we go. Are you able to see this?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. So, um, we just received this artwork back from the graphic designer who, she, she does, um, work or has done work for the Vancouver Mural Festival, so we, we're happy with what she'd done, and, um, she was able to, to do a project of this scope. Um, the only change that we have requested is that the background not be white so that it's not blending in with the wall. Um, so I imagine that that will be a darker, a darker color, a darker green or blue to contrast with the current colors, but, um, we're waiting to receive that back. But, yeah, so that is, that's the idea. As it sits right now, again, we just received it back today, so we're still, uh, doing a few little edits and proofing here and there, but that's the, that's the idea for it.
Okay, are there any questions from, uh, committee? Uh, Councillor Garnet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, Ms. Shaw, for the presentation. Um, but just one question to, perhaps I didn't hear or read it, and you can clarify for me, when you're hoping to have it up by?
We would love to have it up next week. Um, I do understand that we have to go through the procedures and protocols of the town. Um, the Art Walk is running from this coming Thursday through till the eight, till April eighth. Um, so we've got a little bit of flexibility in terms of people out and about. I think in terms of the duration of the project, we will aim to have it up for the summer. Um, so it's not, it, it doesn't have to be up next week, but the sooner the better is, is our hope.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, no, I think it's an excellent idea, and the wall's a little tired, so I think-
It's a bit tired.
I was driving up the street looking at it, thinking, yeah, yeah, you know what, that, having something that, and I hate this expression, to have something that just pops off the wall there would be, I think it would be really great. And, uh, to add some splash of color into the, into that particular area of town, uh, with everything else and coming out of everything and everything hopefully turning positive, I think is a, it was a great idea, and, uh, kudos to you guys for coming up with it with the Artsy, and, um, yeah, I fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor McNeil Smith?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and, uh, just following councillor Garnet, hats off, uh, to bringing, uh, for this idea and bringing, uh, the business owner, Cotton and Blues, and the property owners, uh, together to, uh, to this. It's exciting. Um, I, I have a question through to, uh, sorry, I have one question to you, Morgan, and then a question through to staff, is, um, if this, uh, it's up for six months, uh, the installation will remain up, uh, for six months, if it's deemed, uh, that, uh, it comes down and something else won't go up, will substantial repairs be required to the building to, um-
No, not at all. So the way that they've, they've set up the installation is essentially it would be bracketed to the wall, um, the substrate itself. I don't know a lot about this, but I, I have, I have reviewed the plans with the installer, who is Beacon Signs, who, who has lots of experience in this, and, um, we've got a plan in place that it essentially would just be nail, there's, um, nail fills that would need to happen. So, um, I know the property owner of that space, and he is, he's quite adverse to anything that, of course, would, would cause any damage or any, any large, um, visual mishaps. So we're, we're being very careful with the installation and, and have figured out a way to do it, that it wouldn't cause any, any damage.
Thank you. And a question through the sta, or through, uh, the chair to staff, and, um, just so that the, um, so that the BIA is appreciating this as well. In a staff report, it, it's, uh, under discussion, it says the installation will remain intact for a six-month term until September 2021. And then it continues with the option for review at the end of the six-month period to change the graphic for the fall season. And appreciating the public art policy that we have in place, um, if staff could confirm that, uh, if, uh, the BIA and property owner, business owner decided to have a new installation, that that in fact would come before council because of our public art policy, that, that a change just wouldn't occur on behalf of the proponent?
Through the chair to Mayor McNeil Smith, um, yes, the, the staff recommendation is that a letter of understanding be entered into between the town and the SBIA on the terms of the installation of this artwork. So if that is important to council, to see any future graphic before it's installed, that could be added in that letter of understanding.
Okay. Um, I wasn't thinking of making a motion if, if staff can, can take that away out, through, through you, Mr. Chair, if, uh, staff can advise?
Uh, perhaps, um, maybe a, a, a motion, if that's desirable, to, uh, include or incorporate as part of a, a memorandum of understanding-
Okay.
-a letter of understanding.
Uh, thank you. I, I can do that at the time we're considering a motion.
Okay, uh, councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you. Thanks, uh, Ms. Shaw, for the presentation. One question I have is, I under, am I correct that some, the, um, Something Yellow Studio, the artist, that's, they're from Vancouver? Is that-
Yeah, from Vancouver, yes.
And I guess, I, you know-
I know.
-asked, right?
I know what I, I said.
The SBIA has done such a good job on promoting local and all that sort of stuff.
I know.
I wonder, you know, what consideration was given to supporting local artists or, uh, reaching out to our First Nations community who, uh, got a lot of talented artists there as well?
Yes, so this, this project is a little, there's definitely opportunities to grow, and my hope is that for this installation, that we will be able to do future projects, either in that space or using, using what we're producing with this. Um, it, as with everything with, with this year and COVID and last year, we've been moving quickly on our event planning and getting things set up. So we needed to find an artist who was able to do a digital rendering of that scale. Um, so what we did was, we, we found somebody that was able to do it within the price point that we were looking for, and we, we moved forward without, um, without that side of things. It isn't to say that that's not something that we would like to include, of course, in the future. It was just, um, having somebody that we could access, that could do the work within a quick turnaround time and at a relatively low price point was what we were looking for, and that had experience doing large-scale murals was, was a priority. But now that we know what we need, and in terms of the scale, I think that we'll be able to, to approach the, our arts community, and people will understand what, what, uh, we're looking for, and will have examples and whatnot. So, um, it's in, it is, it's in my head, but I'm just not quite there.
That's good. Um, one other question, if, if I may. Um, I liked in the, uh, in our report, it mentioned that it was, uh, the, the mural would, uh, demonstrate Sydney's character, bring in elements of our Sydney coastline and our connection to being a seaside community. So I, I liked that. Um, however, when I just looked at the, the, the rendering that, I guess you've just got that, all that, I mean, it looks nice, the flowers are nice, but I, I wasn't seeing that, um, uniqueness of Sydney, that connection that's mentioned here. Do you see, um, do, do you think it's meeting, you know, your, your expectations, or?
I, um, we are definitely in the back-and-forth stage, so I know that this, of course, was the first rendering that we received. this, of course, was the first rendering that we received for our community specifically. Um, and I'm happy to revise and and go back to, to the artist and and request that there's a few more flourishes that are of a seaside or seaside components rather. Um, I think that the, the flowers do bring that, that bright splash that we're looking for, but um, certainly in terms of of adding a, a few more elements, I can absolutely request that.
Yeah, well, I think it's such a, a, a good opportunity as a, a place for a selfie spot or, or something right in the town. And so having something that uniquely Sydney, you know, if, if it's got a picture of our the fish market or, you know, the ocean or something to kind of uh, uh, allow uh, you know, allow for something like that. So that's just my, my uh, two cents.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Any uh, further questions or discussion from committee? And if not, there is a staff recommendation. Mayor McNeil Smith?
I'll move the staff recommendation that the request from the Sydney Business Improvement Area Society to install a mural on the west face of the building at two four three seven Beacon Avenue be approved, subject to the following conditions. One, let a letter of understanding be established between the town and the SBIA addressing items related to maintenance of the public art and assurance that the town will not be held liable for any potential damage, including vandalism to the public art. Two, that no costs are to be incurred by the town. And I would add a, a third, uh, that um, any future installation uh, at this location be brought forward to council as per our public art policy.
Second.
Okay, so that's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thanks very much. Okay, so we will now move back to our agenda and uh, administration and finance. And the first item six A is proposed amendments to council procedure bylaw. We have a staff report. Does, sorry, uh, Mayor McNeil Smith?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, after consulting with a, a, a couple of staff earlier today and, and, and some, some colleagues, I would like to uh, to make a resolution that um, that the proposed amendments to the council procedure bylaw be referred to a working group of council consisting of uh, of myself, um, uh, councillor Wainwright uh, and councillor O'Keefe uh, to review uh, the proposed amendments and bring them forward back to a future uh, committee of the whole meeting. And if we have a seconder, I can give reason for
Second. Okay, that's moved and seconded and go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So um, I appreciate that, uh, you know, committee of the whole is actually the, the, the the, the usual opportunity that we could have full deliberations on any aspect of, of making revisions uh, or amendments. But given the nature of it being our, uh, our procedural bylaw, which is not only for council and committee of the whole, but for our committees, I think there are a couple of areas that, uh, that I would just like to delve in uh, with, with staff and give the benefit to uh, have our corporate officer as uh, and, and staff give their opinion prior to, uh, prior to it coming back to council.
Okay, um, councillor O'Keefe?
Uh, thank you. I, I think it's a good idea. I mean, I had quite a, there was a, a few questions um, and comments that I have and I, I could see that we could spend quite a bit of time here tonight wordsmithing and, and that sort of thing. So I think it's a good idea. I just wanted to confirm that there'd be an opportunity for other members of council who, uh, who would be able to uh, submit their, their recommendations to, to that working, working group for incorporation and consideration into the, the, the first draft bylaw. I assume that that would, provision would be made for that.
I would anticipate that's the case. Uh, Mayor McNeil Smith?
Yes, I would just reach out to, to, to all colleagues that uh, if, you know, you may have had ideas for amendments or, or for discussion this evening. Uh, if you could forward, forward those to staff uh, in anticipation of this working group. Uh, we're not seeing this as a long process, perhaps one meeting uh, with staff, uh, and then for it to come back to, to committee.
And uh, I'll just add to it that the um, the process required for changing the procedural bylaw involves public notice advertising of the proposed changes. So it's not as easy to uh, propose ad hoc changes on the fly during the, the discussion of the bylaw. And it does make sense to uh, uh, at least have a more substantive discussion of the pro- of changes before uh, the bylaw gets introduced or before it gets advertised. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Okay, um, so the last item on our agenda is the grants and aid. Um, I'm just looking at the clock. Does committee want to take a short break before we get into grants and aid? Or shall we just dive right into it? Okay, I am seeing everyone saying proceed, so we'll move on to uh, grants and aid. And uh, we do have a staff report introducing this. Everyone's got the uh, package. Um, I've suggested that the way we should uh, start out is by identifying any uh, any items that are in the uh, grant and aids applications where a member of committee may have, um, have to recuse themselves. And I understand that um, councillor Duncan is going to recuse yourself for the Scout Hall uh, application and Mayor McNeil Smith for the um, Literary Festival. Uh, are there any additional ones? So my suggestion would be that we would break those out separately. Um, and that way, uh, you know, we can get them over with and, and have uh, the entire committee here for the bulk of it. Uh, the second thing I'd suggest is that we start by trying to uh, allocate the safe restart funds. And after we're through doing that, uh, it should become clear to us. Well, hopefully we'll have removed some of the requests uh, off the table using the safe restart funds. And we'll know what we have left to, you know, divvy up among the remaining applications. So if we're okay with that, um, there's been a suggestion of what uh, items um, might potentially be funded by the safe restart funds. Um, that is not the Literary Festival or the Scout Hall, so it seems like we should be able to just start discussing the uh, the use of the safe restart funds. And uh, after we're done that, uh, we'll deal with the two items where uh, members have to recuse themselves and pick up from there. So um, how would we like to start? Uh, Mayor McNeil Smith?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I, I think that's a great process and, and I would like to start by proposing that uh, Sandwich Marine Rescue Society's a grant request be considered at least in part as coming from covid restart funds. Um, and um, uh, committee will, will know that uh, we did grant, uh, we did approve uh, in twenty twenty, twenty eight hundred dollars to um, Sandwich Marine Rescue. Their request was five thousand dollars. Uh, this year they've requested five thousand dollars again. Uh, in their application this year, they've indicated two things. One is that the total project that they're considering these funds to go to uh, totals something uh, close to eighteen thousand or eighteen thousand five hundred. And that uh, the municipalities of Sandwich and North Sandwich have uh, uh, either made uh, commitments or in the process of, of considering commitments uh, such that uh, five thousand dollars from Sydney would, uh, would complete the um, uh, the financing for that project. And, and so um, they also mentioned in their application that they have had training uh, delayed. Uh, important training delayed because of covid nineteen and they will have to do additional training um, as, as we go through recovery from covid. And so I'm um, I'm willing to suggest that council provides support of five thousand dollars for twenty twenty-one. Um, and, but that uh, if we did not, we're not in a position where we, where covid, we were in a pandemic, that council would very likely, given the support that councils, uh, this council and previous councils have given, given to Sandwich Marine Rescue, that we might likely uh, grant twenty eight hundred dollars. So I would uh, I would like to make a resolution that we uh, approve twenty-two hundred, which would take it from twenty-eight hundred to five thousand dollars and that that, those funds come from uh, covid restart. So twen- a, a motion for twenty-two hundred dollars from the restart funds uh, to Sandwich Marine Rescue. Um, I realize we won't be considering the other twenty-eight hundred or we could now uh, for the regular grants and aid and that might pose a, a consideration. I realize colleagues may have other, other suggestions.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, so it's moved and seconded. Uh, discussion? Councillor O'Keefe?
Uh, thank you. I, I agree with um, uh, supporting this m- m- Marine Rescue. However, I would be more inclined to fund the entire five thousand out of covid um, recovery funds. Um, as I mentioned to some of my colleagues uh, offline, that listening into the BCEDA conference last week and how some other communities are utilizing their funds, um, not just to cover financial impacts of covid, but also supporting those organizations that will help the community recover from, from covid, both financially and, and mentally and quality of life. Um, we know from the traffic at Tolista Boat Ramp last year that there was a huge increase in people boating this past summer due to the pandemic. Um, that's likely to be the case this coming summer, which increases demand for services from, from this group. Um, as Mayor McNeil Smith mentioned, um, they're uh, going to be having to, they lost uh, training last year that they're going to have to make up. Um, they're also using funds to upgrade their PPE. So I'm actually happy to, to fund the full amount over, out of a covid recovery funds. Thank you.
Okay, um, further discussion? Uh, councillor Rinto?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, likewise, I support the uh, the full five thousand dollars going to Sandwich Marine Rescue Society. Um, I, I feel um, inclined to suggest it might be tidier if we took the full five thousand from Safe Restart, giving us a little more latitude uh, for later in the evening under the Grants and Aid. Uh, given that amount is only fifteen K. So if, uh, if the mover is, is comfortable uh, and if the chair would see that as a friendly amendment, that would be my, my preference. I'll leave my comment there for now.
Um, could I ask for just the quick, um, we don't need to have lengthy debates if people are uh, have already decided between the twenty-two hundred or five K. If uh, if people have decided, I'd suggest that either we just let the amendment happen or we call the question. If it fails, then we immediately move on to the other one. That way we can kind of streamline our debates. Councillor Garnet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, question through you to staff. We allocated twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget for the, for the covid restart. Do we have, given the amount we're talking about putting over and that we have potential other requests coming forward, do we have the latitude to increase that amount at all?
Uh, through the chair to councillor Garnet, yes, you have the ability to increase the amount of uh, safe restart funding by separate resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, so um, we have the option of twenty-two hundred from the restart or five thousand from the restart. The motion currently on the table is twenty-two hundred. Shall, shall I just call the question?
I'll move an amendment to the motion that uh, five thousand come from Safe, Safe Restart.
Okay.
I'll second.
That's moved and seconded. Uh, discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, call the question on the amendment. All in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Uh, to the main motion as amended. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. So that's five thousand for Sandwich Marine Rescue out of the restart funds. Um, next potential use of restart funds? Uh, Mayor McNeil Smith?
Uh, thank you again, Chair. I would like to turn to Vancouver Island's South Film and, and Media Commission. Um, colleagues will be aware that we've had uh, ongoing rec- annual requests of, of five thousand dollars from the Film Commission. Uh, last year we grant, or sorry, uh, we have now had in place, I, I think for the last year or two, uh, made it a line item within the budget of, of five hundred dollars in support. So that five hundred dollars does not come from uh, grants and aid. Um, however, uh, the Film Commission in um, in uh, public media and also in their application has indicated that they have had a shortfall in funding from uh, other levels of government and agencies. Uh, and that they have had opportunities certainly for economic recovery um, in the film industry. And I would be uh, in favor of it coming from uh, from restart funds. And um, I would propose that uh, we've, uh, in approving the budget at a previous meeting, the Film Commission will be getting five hundred dollars, but I would move that uh, we allocate uh, two thousand dollars from the restart funds to the Film Commission.
Second.
That's moved and seconded. Discussion? Councillor O'Keefe?
Uh, thank you. I'm actually happy to uh, provide them with the full amount that they've asked for, which uh, I'm just looking at my list here. I think it was uh, yeah, five, five thousand or forty-five hundred. If we're already giving them five hu- five hundred. And you know, my reasons for that again, well, as uh, Mayor McNeil Smith uh, stated, that they did uh, suffer significantly in terms of funding from the pandemic. And I also note that the film productions that the Film Commission brings to the island, uh, we know that we've had been the benefit of numerous uh, films that they've brought here to Sydney. And I think those are important things that will help our local economy uh, recover from the pandemic. So I, I would propose an amendment of forty-five hundred to be covered from covid uh, restart funds for the uh, Film Commission.
Okay, so that's uh, uh, an amendment that's been moved. Is there a seconder for the amendment?
Second.
Okay, that's moved and seconded. Any discussion on the amendment of forty fi- of increasing it to forty-five hundred? Seeing none, I'll call the question on the amendment. All in favor? Okay, uh, opposed? Okay, that's defeated. It's um, four to three. Against, that is. Okay, um, so to the main motion, uh, to, to uh, allocate two thousand from the restart funds to the Vancouver Island Film Commission, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried unanimously. Okay, um, so that's seven thousand out of the twenty-five thousand safe restart funds. Is there another potential use that someone would like to recommend? Uh, Mayor McNeil Smith?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I, I certainly know which one I want to suggest, but I'm not quite sure how much to, to recommend. But uh, I'd like to turn to Cycling Without Age Society. Um, again, uh, they've come before council, um, and have had varying requests. Last year, the request was twenty-one hundred dollars. We allocated one hundred dollars, uh, one thousand dollars, sorry. Uh, this year they've requested two thousand dollars and I would move uh, that we grant two thousand dollars from restart funds.
Okay, is there
Second.
Uh, seconded by councillor Garnet. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Oh, sorry, um, councillor Duncan, you had your
No, don't worry about it. I was gonna say I, I'd gone for half and half from, from us and, and uh, from the safe restart, but I feel like I know which way this one's gonna go, so I'll just jump on the bandwagon.
Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor of two thousand from the restart? Anyone opposed? That's carried. Okay, um, so we're up to nine thousand from the restart. Uh, any additional uses? Uh, councillor O'Keefe?
Uh, thank you. I, I have a couple more. Um, I would propose that we provide five thousand from the covid restart for kids sport Greater Victoria.
Second for discussion.
Okay, that's moved and seconded uh, for discussion. Uh, councillor O'Keefe?
Yeah, and so I guess um, again, this is an organization they provide, that it is uh, Greater Victoria. They do provide support to kids in um, in Sydney. Uh, we of course know that kids were uh, adversely impacted by covid and this submission also makes reference to how support, how uh, sports um, will help kids return to nor- normalcy after the pandemic. So I, I'm happy to support it out of covid restart funds for it out of COVID restart funds for that reason.
Okay, councillor Garnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I concur with councillor O'Keefe. It's important on so many levels, in terms of mental and physical development, and given everything that children have gone through, and the mental anguish apparently that the experts are saying is you can't even measure it really, how important sport is. And in this particular instance, it's exacerbated by the fact that of this, the people they'll be helping can't afford to do those activities. And given how important they're gonna be for them coming out of it, I fully support what councillor O'Keefe is saying, and it just can't be stressed enough how much this is needed in our community. We have people that are in this need, and so I have no issues at all with offering the full amount out of COVID restart. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councillor Rintul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'll concur at the need to provide support to Kids Sport. I had found funding sort of in my thought process under our regular grant and aid, but I'll support the suggestion that it come from COVID relief. I'll also speak, you know, in strong favor of Kids Sport and the work that they do. As past president of Peninsula Minor Hockey, I've certainly seen a number of kids enabled to play sport from this community, from the peninsula at large, because of the great work that Kids Sport does. So I will support councillor O'Keefe's motion.
Further discussion? Councillor Duncan?
I can tell if you can see my hand against the background. I'm in favor of supporting this from the COVID. I'm not sure if I'm in favor of the full five thousand. One of the things that kids still did have more than they had of other things was still organized sport and organized being allowed to see other children when completely one-hundred percent structured and supervised by adults. And while that was very important, it was certainly a lifeline for my very extroverted child who couldn't have playdates, so technically not supposed to. But what was really, really hurting kids is that they're not allowed to just have unstructured time to visit with other kids and their families. And no amount of throwing money to let them go and be, you know, in that really structured environment is gonna make up for that. So what I'm worried about is using up our COVID Safe Restart money, which we're going to need in the future for providing services that nobody else is gonna give us money for, that is gonna help those families get by. Because, you know, we still haven't figured out what's gonna happen when all of the COVID grants and aid and stuff goes away. You know, I knew families that were four people living in a nine-hundred-square-foot apartment during the original lockdown. Getting out to soccer once a week wasn't gonna stop that, but that, this is kind of that structural problem of affordable housing that I'm worried that a municipality is gonna have to start addressing in a couple of years, because it's gonna get really pinchy in the next couple of years. And we're going to be undermining our ability to deliver those much more fundamental and important things right now. So I would be in favor of giving money from the COVID grant to Kids Sport, but maybe not as much, because I'd really like to not actually try and give all of that money that we've allotted away at this point.
Okay, so I've got councillor O'Keefe and Mayor McNeil Smith, and then I'll make a comment. Councillor O'Keefe?
Oh, thank you. I was just gonna say, in regards to the amount, if we, there's about eight or nine, maybe ten items that have been kind of tossed around prior to the meeting that could be used for COVID. And if we were to fund them all at the maximum amount, we still don't come to, I believe by my calculation, we don't entirely use up the entire amount. In regards to other things, like affordable housing and things that are gonna come later, yeah, that's gonna happen. But, I mean, I don't think that twenty-five thousand dollars from COVID is gonna get us very far with some of those other things. I think this is all about balance. And a lot of our money that we've committed so far towards the COVID restart has been in terms of covering off tax revenue. So most of what we've done is used that money to provide a tax break, mainly to the business community and somewhat to the residential community. So I really think that we need to use this twenty-five thousand to balance that out and give some support to these other sort of wellness type of issues. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you too, Mr. Chair. And I concur in many respects with councillor Duncan. I was, had a lower figure in mind of about three thousand dollars, and my rationale was more so from the application and the demonstrated need. And I think the Sanich Marine Rescue Society and the Vancouver Island Film Commission demonstrated well in their application, their need for that level of funding. However, Kids Sport is very well-funded, and they did indicate a number, about fifty Sydney residents that might apply for the support in various sport programs. But they didn't indicate what the five thousand would do. Is there a gap? Is there an additional need? I mean, we can see that there might be an additional need, but it wasn't demonstrated in the application to, in my reading, of the necessary need for five thousand. It is a first-time applicant, and I think three thousand is significant. And I would move an amendment, I realize I'm testing this, but I would move an amendment to three thousand dollars.
Okay, so an amendment's been moved. Is there a second or for the amendment?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. So at this point, we should be discussing the amendment. And I had myself next on the list, and I see that councillor Duncan had, also had her hand up. This actually, I guess, does relate to the amendment, because I was thinking of a smaller number as well. And it was also in relation to the need that I was thinking of. When I look at their application, and this is a very worthwhile organization, no doubt, they've got a program budget listed of two-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and they identify where they expect to get that from, with five thousand identified as the application for grant and aid to the town of Sydney. Now, I note that in their, where they expect to get it from, they don't have any other municipalities listed as giving them any money. And I think that is somewhat unlikely, given that it seems they've applied to the city of Victoria and Sanich as well. And in fact, if they're applying to Sydney, I'd be amazed if they haven't applied to most municipalities. So I think they're gonna get their two-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty, even if we gave them nothing. I'm in favor of giving them something, but I think giving them the full five thousand is going beyond what we need to do. And I agree with councillor Duncan. I'm confident that somewhere through the year, we're going to see another group come forward from Sydney who needs some assistance that we might be able to give from the COVID restart funds, but not if we've spent them all. So I'm happy to have some in reserve. And, I mean, if nobody comes forward needing it, we can use it to help transition back, you know, to our normal property tax regime. But I do like the idea of not allocating all our funds so that we do have that opportunity. And I think that this is a group that doesn't have as much need as some of the more local ones. Anyway, thank you. And I had councillor Duncan next?
Oh, thank you. I had a lower number than the mayor, but you know what, the three thousand is fine. I'll go with that.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion. So I'll call the question on the amendment to reduce it to three thousand. Sorry, was that a hand up to speak, or, okay. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, that carried unanimously. So now we're on the amended motion for three thousand for Kids Sport. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. So three thousand to Kids Sport from the restart. Any additional uses of the restart funds? Councillor Rintul, and then councillor Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move that seven hundred dollars from Safe Restart grant be applied to the Crisis Intervention and Public Information Society application.
Second.
Okay, so that's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Sorry, councillor Duncan?
Yeah, I'm actually, at this point, just looking at what we have left, I'm not sure if we actually need to go into the Safe Restart for some, for some of this one, especially that smaller amount. So I would have said this one still, seeing as we gave them seven hundred last year. They asked for seven hundred. They've asked for seven hundred again. I would be perfectly happy giving this from our regular grants and aid. This wasn't an increased amount.
Okay, further discussion? Mayor McNeil Smith?
A comment I was wanting to make earlier, but we'll mention now, is we're in a bit of a balancing act, I think, particularly with the comments, which I think I certainly concur with, with regards to having additional restart funds available for applicants that may come forward at a later date. We've seen through this year's applications that approximately eight or nine organizations that have regularly applied under grants and aid have not applied this year. And there's gonna be a variety of reasons for that. However, I might see those organizations either during the year, as we recover from the pandemic, or at next year's grant and aid, we get an increased amount of requests. And so I'm actually comfortable with there being some unallocated regular grants and aid monies that would either be available through this year or to add on to next year. And so it is a balancing act in terms of whether we take it from restart or take it from the general grant and aids fund. But I'm, all support coming from the restart funds.
Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you. Just to build on the mayor's point, my feeling is that anything that is at all related to COVID, if we can take it from the restart fund, we should. And then that gives us, because the grants and aids monies are more flexible, there's, you know, we have a lot more flexibility in how we allocate that. There is some parameters with the COVID. So I'm inclined to support paying anything out of COVID that can be shown to be related to that. So I'm happy to take it this and potentially other things out of COVID, so we can have, as the mayor says, other grant and aid funds later in the year if needed.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. Seven hundred from the restart for the Crisis Intervention Society. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Seeing none, that's carried. Any, actually, I think I had councillor Duncan next, and then Mayor McNeil Smith. Councillor Duncan?
Yeah, I'm gonna move with the one that started the entire idea of having the Safe Restart funds, which was the request from Farmlands Trust. They've requested up to thirty-five thousand, but I am proposing ten thousand. And I think that this is really an important one to fund, particularly from restart grant funding, because this is, because they didn't have the greatest application. And even after we asked for additional information, I feel like they didn't give us great information about their program, and they kind of, which is why I would not give them the full amount. But as councillor Fallett pointed out, when we discussed them the first time, what they're talking about is actually expanding the land under cultivation, and that's gonna be something we really desperately need to do, particularly when we start talking about COVID recovery and supply chains and shortening our supply chains over the next few years. So this will be one that I think we need to make sure that money gets spent on.
Okay, is there a second or for the motion?
I will second that.
Okay, discussion on the motion? Mayor McNeil Smith, and then councillor Fallett?
Thank you, Chair. A question through the staff or the chair, because is how much have we allocated to, from COVID restart to this point, please?
Twelve thousand seven hundred. Staff says I got that right.
Well done, Chair. Thank you for staff for confirming.
Okay, councillor Fallett?
Thank you very much. And thank you, councillor Duncan, for making that recommendation. I would, I concur with that, obviously, as a seconder. One of the questions that we had at the previous meeting, when the question about Farmlands Trust came up, we had some questions about, because they, there was no indication that they were supporting the food bank out on the peninsula, and that was some concern, beyond just the growing of the food, whether or not they were supporting the food bank. And my understanding from correspondence I got through from North Sanich, who had also asked that question, is that our peninsula food bank, our Lions Food Bank in Sydney, is short on storage space. And as much as they would love to be able to take on the extra food, is they just don't have the facilities to receive and store the food. So I appreciate that Farmlands Trust had reached out to the food bank, but unfortunately, the food bank can't take advantage of that particular help at this time anyhow. So I still feel that what Farmlands Trust is doing is a worthwhile cause. It is about growing the food and supporting it, and even if it isn't directly helping those in need of groceries in our community, it is something that I believe we should be supporting. So I'm happy to support this motion.
Okay, councillor Rint?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, and I, like councillor Duncan, was certainly keen to see this item supported through a Safe Restart funding. And I'll also express maybe some thoughts around the amount, and that, given the application perhaps wasn't as fulsome as we'd hoped with respect to some of the clarity, and I know we got some, independent of this application by way of North Sanich, et cetera, I'd actually come into this with the amount of five thousand dollars as a recommended amount. I'll yield to my fellow councillors further discussion before I determine, you know, whether I feel I wanna stick with that amount. But certainly do wanna see us support this particular application. I'm just not convinced of the amount of ten thousand dollars at this point. Thank you.
Okay. I've got Mayor McNeil Smith, and then councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to concur with councillor Rintul for the reasons that he gave. I think, while it was certainly a helpful application, I think more information could have been provided. And I think a specific request would have been, would have been more appropriate. I'll also draw attention, council's attention to, so I'm willing to support a lower amount just for those reasons. However, a second reason is that, while we have latitude, is that with twelve thousand five hundred allocated to this point, allocating another, or allocating ten thousand would take that to twenty-two-five. And I was proposing for us to consider the Sydney Lawn Bowling Request under Restart, which is three thousand, and the Fed Urban Agricultural Society, which is one thousand. And that would take us over twenty-five if we were to give favorable consideration to those appreciating. We could pass an additional motion with regards to restart funds, but I just want to bring that to that to attention.
Councillor O'Keefe?
Yeah, I agree with councillor Rintul and the mayor. Since there seems to be some interest, I propose an amendment that the amount be reduced to five thousand dollars to come out of COVID restart.
Is there a second or for the amendment?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend to reduce it to five thousand. Discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, four in favor and three opposed. So the main motion is now to allocate 5,000 to restart? Any discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried unanimously. Okay, and I've heard a suggestion of a motion for the Sydney Lawn Bowling and also one for Fed Urban Agriculture. Do you want to do those separately? Would someone like to move, Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you, Chair. We'll, we'll move that we allocate $3,000 to Sydney Lawn Bowling from restart funds.
Second.
Okay, that's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you, Chair. Very briefly, I think the application clearly showed the need and the impacts of COVID and what benefits this grant would, would bring.
Okay, any further discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. So that's 3,000 to Sydney Lawn Bowling. And would someone like to make a motion with respect to Fed Urban Agriculture? Councillor O'Keeffe?
Thank you. I'll move that $1,000 be taken from the COVID restart funds for Fed Urban Agricultural Society.
Okay, is there a seconder?
Second.
Okay, that was seconded by Mayor McNeil Smith. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Okay. Anything further in terms of use of Safe Restart Funds? We are at...
21,700.
21,700, yeah. So that would still leave some funding. Councillor O'Keeffe?
Thank you. I'll try this one. Peninsula Dry Grad. So I'll move that, what's the amount? $1,000 be taken from COVID restart for Peninsula Dry Grad.
Is there a seconder? Okay, I'm not seeing a seconder on that one.
Okay.
Would anyone else like to propose a motion? It is not necessary to allocate all of the restart funding. We could turn to the regular grants and aid tax funding, and we can circle back to the restart funds later if need be. Okay, so the, if committee's okay with that, I suggest that we would deal with the first of the items where a council member has to recuse themselves. Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you, Chair. I recuse myself from the discussion on the Sydney Literary, Peninsula Literary Society, as my business has an interest with them.
Okay. So we'll just allow the mayor to leave the chamber. Can't quite do that. Okay, so the mayor's left the chambers, and the Sydney and Peninsula Literary Society request for 500. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move $500 from grants and aid. Second.
So that was moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And can we bring him back? And the next one we, we would be dealing with is the Sydney Guide and Scout Hall Society. And I understand that, Councillor Duncan, you're going to recuse yourself for this one?
I'm a scouter, so I'll recuse myself for this one. I don't know if Sandy moves me or if I do something.
Yep, thank you. You can just move him into the waiting room. Perfect. Okay, and we're just waiting for Mayor McNeil Smith to come back. However, we do have a quorum, and it is a fairly simple item. So I suggest maybe we just deal with it. Would someone like to make a motion?
$1,000 for the Sydney Guide and Scout Hall Society.
Second.
So that's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. So Mayor McNeil Smith was entering the room just as I called the vote, and since he was present, that would count. Would you, it's okay, it's not your item, it's the scout hall. The motion is a thousand. Are you in favor or not? If, if you're in favor, you don't have to do anything.
What am I in favor of, Chair?
A thousand for the scout hall.
I'm in favor.
Okay, great. So that's carried. And if we can bring Councillor Duncan back. And we're on to the regular grants and aid. We've just approved the Sydney Literary Festival for 500, the Guide and Scout Hall for 1,000. We have 13,500 left in the grants and aid budget and various items remaining. Would, oh, Councillor O'Keeffe?
Thank you. So I'm just going to start at the top of the list. For Bike Victoria, I'll move that we fund $1,300 out of grants and aids for their local bike education program.
I'll second that.
So that's moved and seconded. Councillor Fallett, discussion?
Thank you. I think this is a very important one to support. I have been working for a number of years with the RCMP to try to get a, a kids' training session. And I know Councillor Duncan has shown interest in this as well. And it's just really hard to get a program, to get training for the kids. And I think it's so important, we're going to have more and more people on bicycles, and we need to ensure that our kids coming up have got the skills and the confidence to be riding in safe places as well as in traffic eventually. So I'm, and this is a program that is going to be helping run a program out here on the peninsula in Sydney. So I am fully supportive of all this.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. That's 1,300 for Bike Victoria. Next? Councillor O'Keeffe?
Thank you. Moving down the list to Peninsula Dream Society Core Operations, I'll move that we fund $5,000 out of grants and aid for Peninsula Dreams Core Operations.
Second.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Councillor O'Keeffe?
I guess I'm noting that this is really the only item that we're funding that is sort of related to environmental services. They do a lot of good work in our community, funding school programs and that sort of thing. So I, I think it's a, a good investment for, for us, for our community.
Okay, further discussion? Now we're out. Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Next?
I'll move $1,000 to Peninsula Dreams School Programs from grants and aid.
I'd note, they did not apply for that this year, but is there a seconder?
My error. Beg your pardon, Mr. Chair. You're correct, they did not. I'll withdraw the motion.
You had no seconder, so not necessary. Councillor O'Keeffe?
Thanks. I'm going to try two, two, two at the same time. Can we do that?
Yes.
Okay, good. Let, let's try this. So I will move that we provide $750 each to 676 Kitty Pop Sponsoring Committee Society and to the Navy League of Canada.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second of Councillor Garnett. Any discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Okay, anything further? Mayor McNeil Smith?
I think there is one more on the list here. The Peninsula Dry Grad Society would move $1,000 from grants and aid.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
That's seconded by Councillor O'Keeffe. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Anything further? Mayor McNeil Smith?
We have gone through all of the requests that were submitted to us. However, I'd like to put before, before committee, consideration of granting $5,000 of COVID restart funds and, and take this as a, as a resolution of restart funds over and above what has been, what council has approved to, to COVID restart, to the Sydney Lions Food Bank. And while they did not make a request, we have heard throughout the pandemic of the tremendous increase in, in need and additional service provided to the community through the, through the Lions, Sydney Lions Food Bank. And I think it's, it's unique in our community, serving the peninsula, and that other municipalities have contributed as well, and, and would make that as a motion.
Okay, so could, sorry, I'm looking for a seconder. Councillor O'Keeffe, you're seconding?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. To staff, would this motion be to amend the financial plan and recommend that to council?
That would be the proper way to do it, yes.
Okay, so it, the mo, because the financial plan has to be approved by council, so this would be a recommendation from committee as a whole to council, that the financial plan be amended to allocate 5,000 from the Safe Restart to the food bank as a grant and aid. And is that consistent with the understanding of the mover and seconder?
A question through the staff, Mr. Chair. Are those, do those need to be separate motions or in one motion, does that one motion serve?
One motion will work.
Thank you.
Okay, Councillor O'Keeffe?
Thank you. A question through you to staff. I'm just wondering, where are, where are we in our calculations now in terms of what's left in grants and aid and what's left in COVID restart? And I guess I'm wondering, do we have to, can we fund, do we have enough left to fund part of it out of grants and aid and part of it out of what's left in COVID restart, so that we don't have to amend the financial plan?
Through the chair to Councillor O'Keeffe, we have 8,000 remaining in total, 3,300 in Safe Restart and 4,700 in the regular grant program.
Okay, so we could, if we, if we wanted, take that last 3,300 and give that to the food bank, and then throw in another 1,700. And that would get, you know, we wouldn't have any more COVID restart funds. But if council chose at some point in the future, we could add additional funds if there was a need for COVID restart is, for community groups, for example. Is, is that correct?
I'll refer that one to staff.
Yes, that is correct, councillor. At any time, if a request comes in for Safe Restart funding, or if council chooses to allocate more funds, that can be done through an amendment to the financial plan by resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you, Chair. I, I prefer the, the motion as it, as it stands. I do appreciate the, the option that, that Councillor O'Keeffe has, has suggested. However, from earlier discussion among, amongst us, I think leaving some funds in both the, the restart funds and in the, in the general grants and aid is, is appropriate.
Okay, so the motion that we've got is the, is to take 5,000 from the restart funds separately to provide to the food bank. So it would not be coming out of the 25,000 that had been allocated to, go out along with grants and aid. Just to be clear on the motion. So any further discussion? Councillor Duncan?
So, thanks. I, I'm not sure why we're doing this now, if they haven't asked for the money. And we know that they're very well supplied with food, in fact, have no additional storage space for food. And we know a lot of people have done fundraisers for the food bank during COVID, and other municipalities have given them money. And so they haven't asked us, I'm guessing because they have no immediate need for it. And what I'm really concerned about is that we, you know, I made a motion to give 10,000 for people to actually create agricultural land that would in perpetuity increase in actual supply of food. And that was, was cut. And we're going to give $5,000 that was not asked for to an organization that may not need it, to simply buy food that already exists, that doesn't really actually make anyone more food secure. But, you know, it's like a tourniquet isn't healthcare. And I'm just wondering why we're doing this, if, if the only reason we're deciding to do this now and amend the financial plan to give money that wasn't asked for is because other municipalities did it. And if we have a need to try and, and give an appearance of, of doing something. So I'm just, I'm, I'm concerned about how the, how food security and the food bank are being used here. I, I'm not in favor of, of this at all.
Okay, I've got Councillor Garnett, then Councillor O'Keeffe, and then Mayor McNeil Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll support what's put me forward. It's, for me, I actually don't remember them coming forth with requests before for funding. And I don't think it's because there's lack of need. I think it's just something that they just, they try to do it their own way sort of thing. And, and they do get great support from the community. I absolutely agree with you on that. And I agree with your point about the, the Farmlands Trust situation as well. But if, I think it's, it's not about because other people are doing, or it looks right. I, I just think it's, it's, it's an important contribution in the sense that even if they don't need it tomorrow, they might need it the day after. Their situation's very volatile, and when their needs are, are all of a sudden there. And if they have the resources, and we, I know from speaking with them, that they, they're able to get like two to three to one for every dollar that they get. They're, they're going to be able to fill a void that might just come up out of nowhere. And that, you know, to be, to be overprepared is not a bad thing, especially when you're considering that they're a lifeline for people who are desperate and in need. So that's why I'll support the, the motion. Thank you.
I've got Councillor O'Keeffe, then Mayor McNeil Smith, and Councillor Fallett.
Thank you. You know, after listening to Councillor Duncan, I think she makes a good point. In regards to, this is a group that, of course, they provide a great service to the community. They are often underfunded. However, they are also one of the more fortunate groups in our community in the sense that they probably have a higher profile than many of these other community groups that are looking for. I mean, you know, several companies and organizations, you know, when they think about doing a fundraiser, you know, it's, the, the food bank has a really high profile. Other groups that we've got, looked at today in, in our community don't have that profile. So while I agree that 5,000 to the food bank is, is not a bad idea, I'm also thinking that there are a lot, a lot of other, other groups in the community, that maybe they haven't applied, and they needed, they could use the money. So I, I would, I think I'll vote against this motion, because they didn't ask for it. They are, as I said, a high-profile group. They get a lot of support in the community. If they come forward later and say we need it, then I would think, then we would have the, the option. But just to, to go and do it just because everybody else is, I, yeah, I, I'm not in favor of that. So I'll vote against the motion. Thank you.
Okay, I've got Mayor McNeil Smith and then Councillor Fallett.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to speak, but I will defer to the first-time speakers.
Okay, I've got Councillor Fallett, Councillor Rintul, then Mayor McNeil Smith.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Mayor McNeil Smith, for bringing this up. I won't be supporting it. I do agree with Councillor Duncan's perspective. And for me, it is, I think they do need to be supported. be supported. And the drain on their resources has certainly increased during COVID and just in general. There is an increased demand for the service of the food bank. And as we heard earlier through some other communication, one of the things that the food bank has talked about to Farmlands Trust is that they don't have adequate space. I would be far more in favor of having a conversation with the food bank and saying, is there something that the community can do to help you meet the needs of your customers, your clients? Is there more that we can be doing? Is it beyond? To just continue to give them money without a plan, I don't think that that's good, and also because they didn't ask for it. Now, they probably will take it and say, this is wonderful, thank you so much. But I think we do need to take a look and see what needs they may have. And rather than just cutting them a check, is actually explore, is there something else we can be doing to help them first before we just give them the money? Thank you.
Counselor Wintool?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I note that supporting this motion only moves it forward to council for our further deliberation in terms of amending the budget and earmarking funds accordingly. So from that perspective, I'm happy to support it. I'll also note that, you know, I understand the perspective that has been presented from colleagues who are concerned with regard to moving forward in this way. But giving them $5,000, this is a reputable organization who's, over many years' service, proven to be very reliable, a pillar of importance in our community. And I don't think that they're necessarily going out to buy food with that money if their shelves are full. They have other operational expenses that are, you know, less tangible than the food on the shelves that these funds can go to support. And if they need to purchase food with them, as I believe it was Counselor Garnett who pointed out, their buying power is greater than most, given the relationships they have. So I'm happy to give them, you know, this type of support from the town, and I will continue to support this motion. Thank you.
Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you, Chair. Clarification with regards to storage of food at the food bank. We're aware that they do not have cold storage for additional vegetables, which was what we learned with regards to Newman Farms and if they would be able to, if they were to provide vegetables. I don't think it's an issue of storage in general. The others, I want to take counsel back to, if they recall what the food bank was operating, what premises they were operating before, I think it was about 2009, was a very small space in an old building in the corner of Iroquois Park. And I was fortunate to sit on council of 208 to 211, and that council approved the current building, which was a new building constructed, paid for by Sydney. And at that time, or if not shortly before that, Sydney was picking up all of the costs, even though it was serving peninsula residents. Since that time, or I think as when that agreement came into place for the current facility, the other municipalities do share in those costs. But I don't think the Sydney Food Bank from that time, they were so grateful for the establishment of that food bank in the park. It was such a significant upgrade in service from the facilities that they were operating for that they would ever dream of coming to the town to request funds. And I don't believe they have, and I don't know that they've gone to other municipalities. I know, whether it was last year or any year in the past, that there has been a time when they have had to put a call out, and sometimes a desperate call out for food or for finances to meet the needs that they have. And as Counselor Wintool alluded to, they could spend this money on additional cold storage space if, to take in additional, you know, fresh fruits and vegetables if that's what they thought the need was. So I appreciate points made by colleagues, but I remain supportive of this motion.
Okay, thank you. I think we've had a pretty good discussion of both sides of it. Are there any further debate on this? Seeing none, I'll call the question on the motion, 5,000 from the restart funds. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, that's four in favor, three opposed. That's carried, so that will get dealt with by council. That completes all of the grant and aid applications. Are there any further motions anyone would like to make with respect to grants and aid? And if not, that would complete our agenda, and I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved? Second?
Second.
Moved, seconded and thirded, all in favor? Opposed? That's carried, and we're adjourned. Thanks very much.